Ready to go? All right, let's all stand and say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, if someone will make an approval of our agenda, please.
May I make a suggestion before you?
Yes.
Take a look on that, please. We'd like to request a closed session this evening to discuss a lawsuit.
Okay.
On litigation at the end of the meeting.
Okay. All right, we'll just put that in our seat. Will that change to the agenda? Would somebody make much to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, second. Thanks, Senator. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Public comment? I've got Cecil Bailey signed up. If you would come on up microphone, give us your name and where you live, and we'll hear you.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. Cecil Bailey, two thirty-two, Curtin Bluff, in Hendersonville. I'm here as a guest for a few minutes today. I'll continue to orient this way. This is for everyone.
Okay.
The Henderson County GOP is now in league with the National Hispanic Assembly as an outreach. That's a national organization, and they are now in league with us down to the local level. And we've combined efforts with our surrounding counties, Transylvania, Pope, Buncombe, and Henderson, of course, to begin this outreach. We are announcing our inaugural event at Burning Blush Brewery on Tuesday, the twenty-second, at six P. M. This is a no cost affair. Anyone who is invited, what we are hoping to attract are going to be local businessmen, because if we're going to organize a chapter, we're going to need leadership in the local community. Why are we doing this? North Carolina is, as the last census is right at the edge of eleven percent of the population of the state, and that's reflected here in western North Carolina as well. There are outreach programs in the Hispanic community, but none from us back to the Hispanics, and we want to change that. For this, the National Assembly is sending in one of their seniors, Eduardo Andrade. Nice to have him expand to try to help us push this off. Several legislators will be there. Jennifer Balkum will attend. Congressman Edwards will also attend briefly, because it's his anniversary, and he has to come back a showing and make it to dinner with his wife. Again, no cost. Finger food. Just come and meet your community. Save the date. I'm going to give it again at the Burning Blush. I have to stop and say that it wants to come out burning brush. It just doesn't, Burning Blush, Tuesday, August the twenty-second, at six P. M. We'll have more notices that we'll send out as soon as we can. I'm going to give you a phone number. If you wish to attend, it would help us in how much food we would need to have. Four, four, three, nine, nine, four, nine, five, four, zero. I know that's in an outer area, but it's not, we're part of that community that's moving to North Carolina. It's the phone number. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Here are none, we'll move along. Approval of the consent agenda by motion, please.
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, everybody. Any spoken? Thank you, Senator. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to our regular agenda, public hearing, R twenty-three dash oh one, rezoning ordinance twenty-three dash six. Someone would make a motion for us to go into public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we enter a public hearing for the aforementioned.
Second. Thank you. All in favor? Okay. I think we may get the wheels back together, but I don't know. Anybody on council have any conflicts of interest? Anybody need an update on where this property is or anything? It's my understanding it's located directly across from Marlowe School. We go on Butler Bridge.
My family. For a long time. I stand nothing against.
Anybody opposed to saying we're staying on board with this rezon? With our stated knowledge of this? Okay. Will I ask staff to give us their presentation? As well.
I recognize Mike Malachek, our planning director, to give you the background.
Evening, council. So we did receive a rezoning application on April eighteenth from Judy Alvarez, who's the executor of the estate of B. V. Alvarez, who has unfortunately passed, and the owner of nineteen thirty-six B. B. R. L. L. C., which is the listed owner of the property of nineteen thirty-six Butler Bridge Road. Judy's appointed James Andrews as her agent to help her with the rezoning. He's joining us remotely just because he had the conflict this evening. So after I finish my presentation and am able to answer any of your questions, he's more than welcome to speak on Judy's behalf via Zoom. So the rezoning request to rezone the property from M. R. thirty, low-density residential, to neighborhood commercial. And the application and appointment of Agent Formar attachment A. The hearing has been properly noticed for tonight. Attachment L. and M. includes the public notice timeline and the certificate of mailing of letters for adjacent property owners and the posting of the sign on the property as well. So the property consists of about two point three acres. There's a sixty-eight hundred square foot metal building on the property and a sixteen hundred square foot garage. Aircheck, radon equipment business is the current occupant and has been operating there since about nineteen ninety. Again, directly across from Glenn Marlowe School. So again, when Mills River Incorporated in oh-three, this business had been in place for quite a while, but M. R. thirty, low-density residential zoning was applied to the property, which upon that being adopted as our official first zoning map, made the property a non-conforming use. Because again, low-density residential does not allow any commercial uses such as that. And if you dig into the non-conforming section of town code, just so you understand what the limitations are, basically it says any non-conforming use cannot be extended in large or altered except for safety repairs, normal building maintenance, and the non-conforming use can only be converted to a more conforming use. So basically from commercial to either a government building, a public school, but again, with the ideal conforming use being residential. The other issue with non-conformity is if it's discontinued for six months, a hundred and eighty days, you lose that use. This was something we dealt with, just as another example, the Shade Tree Garage. When that property was sold to a different operator, they basically had six months to start the same operation up again, or else it would, we would only permit something that complies with that zoning district for that parcel. So again, the applicant wishes to rezone to neighborhood commercial so they can continue operating on the subject property, continue to invest in the property and the commercial building. And again, all of the commercial buildings and operations on site predate the town's incorporation and zoning ordinance. So the M. R. thirty district again is meant primarily for residential. It's included in your packet as attachment C. and neighborhood commercial uses are attachment D. So again, the zoning district description is a quiet neighborhood consisting primarily of single-family homes. If you look at the neighborhood commercial district description, which is what the applicant wishes to rezone to, it's to provide a compatible or compatible residential and commercial uses which protect and enhance the rural character of Mills River. So again, some uses in neighborhood commercial that are allowed by law are retail business or service within an enclosed building, which again, when the applicant met with me, I basically advised them this was the zoning district that would make the most sense for them to rezone to, because the aircheck operation fits within that parameter of retail business or service in an enclosed building. So again, it's been a while since we've done a rezoning. So they're requesting to go to neighborhood commercial, but we have to consider all uses, not just the business that's there, not just what they're doing now. And again, any failure to consider all uses could be contract zoning, which is illegal. So attachment E. and F. includes the current zoning map and then the proposed zoning map. So you can compare them, the land uses in adjacent zoning districts. Everything around here is M. R. thirty, low-density residential. The school as well, even though it is a public school, it's M. R. thirty. And then usually I try to highlight other rezonings that have been in the vicinity, just to sort of changes in the zoning map in the area over time. And I think we've gone through these when we did the Anointed Word Church rezoning. So the daycare center, you can see it's that little brown triangle at the corner, was rezoned from M. R. thirty to neighborhood commercial in February oh-seven. And then again, the last one I believe we heard in this area was the Anointed Word Church property, the Brown Trapazoid, a little further down, which was also rezoned from M. R. thirty to neighborhood commercial December of twenty-two. So staffs found that the rezoning request is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. Again, it designates this property as mixed residential category, which does allow for not just single-family residential schools, but also identifies acceptable land uses as retail restaurants, office, et cetera. And again, those align with a lot of the permitted uses in neighborhood commercial. Now, because this parcel is separated from similar zoning districts and kind of stands on its own as a smaller piece of land, we do have to do spot zoning reasonableness analysis. So again, we want to protect ourselves from a challenge that we're isolating one piece of property and rezoning it differently from the rest of the surrounding community. There's a draft statement of reasonableness included in attachment J. for your review. And again, I've just drafted some items for council's consideration, but the main items when looking at reasonableness are the size, physical attributes of the property, compatibility with existing comp plan, benefits and detriments to the landowner, neighbors, and the community, relationship between proposed uses and current uses of adjacent properties, why the rezoning is in the public interest, and any change conditions warranting the rezoning. So the planning board heard this in June. Again, due to our break in July, we had to wait until this meeting to have the public hearing. But the planning board did recommend approval and found this to be consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. Their consistency statement is in attachment K., and then staff recommends approval for the same reasons as well. I think I've gone through everything. So again, the options before council tonight are approve rezoning, approve with modifications table, or deny the request. And again, just to clarify the vote, since it's been a while and because of the reasonableness statement, just for clarity and for the record, it would be best to have a motion to either approve or deny, motion to adopt or reject the consistency statement and a similar one for the statement of reasonableness. But that's my summary. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I've got a couple. So Michael, the buildings that are on the ground there on this piece of property now. So we have setback in landscaping rules or light in, or neighborhood commercial, correct? Do they, are the buildings outside of the, what would be setbacks? And would they have to upgrade the landscaping to our landscaping rules if we rezon this?
It looks like the building is outside of our front yard setback requirement. But again, the building could still exist as a non-conforming building. But again, with the rezoning, the applicant's trying to address the non-conforming use itself. Now landscaping and commercial site plan requirements will really only come into play if a zoning permit's pulled for the property. So we, I can't, you know, they're not rezoned, and then I go over there and say, you have to make all these improvements. It's only upon pulling a permit where then I deem the site has to comply with everything in our code now.
So if we change this, is that not permitting that parcel to neighborhood commercial?
Correct. It would change the zoning to neighborhood commercial for that parcel, and the use would then be permitted.
Okay. And so there's quite a bit of M. R. thirty between any neighborhood commercial and this, and you feel comfortable with the, that this not being spot zoned?
I think based on the reasonableness statement put together, I think we've covered all our bases for that type of a challenge. And I really think the argument, and again, what the applicant's primary argument is, which you'll hear from Mr. Andrews, is that this existed before the town, and I believe the incorrect zoning was probably applied to it.
And I do not disagree at all.
Yeah.
I do have one other thing. It doesn't necessarily go to this. So have we changed whenever we got our, this land use vision and expert excerpt here, G., attachment G. So I don't see M. R. thirty or general business or any of that on this in the legend here. So are we changing our, what we call our zoning districts?
Well, the future land use map, and again, if you look at attachment H., the next one, is about future land uses, and it's more categories of land use classifications. So it doesn't reference the zoning districts, but again, whenever the comp plan was adopted, and again, Daniel, you can chime in, since I wasn't here for all that, it was basically meant to near similar uses. So when I do my analysis, what I look at is what's the designation in the future land use map? And then I look at the district chart and basically see how those desirable and acceptable uses meet up with neighborhood commercial. And then there's also the not desirable column, which again, for mixed residential, is industrial services and apartments.
That's all I have right now. Anything else?
So at this time, if the applicant or property owner or someone in their behalf would like to speak, that'd be a great time.
So Jim Andrews, feel free to unmute yourself and chime in here. I think we're going to hit the button for you to unmute now.
Well, everything has pretty much been said as far as previously in the previous planning board meeting. My close friend, B. V. Alvarez, and his wife bought this property, and in nineteen ninety, actually added on and started their business there. There was pretty much cow fields at the time. The town of Mills River in two thousand and three rezoned that area, M. R. thirty, which, of course, I wasn't involved in, in, in B. V. at that time, didn't have any concerns, because the business was, was young and it was growing, but he didn't take address or taken into consideration the possibilities down the road. When he got very sick, at that point, it was a time for him to sell the business, which he did to the existing tenant. And my concern at that time was the zoning, being the, the business and the property being grandfathered in, was fine as things were at that point in time, but it, B. V.'s desire was to sell the business to the, they struck a deal, and of course, they are the tenant in the property now, and it's a very clean process, and they sell retail and radon gas detection devices. There's no off-gassing. It's just, it's a very clean business. But the, our concerns and argument is that that business existed there before the town instituted the M. R. thirty zoning, which actually, at this point where we're at right now in twenty twenty-three, could drastically hurt the valuation of that property and the continuance of business for aircheck. And there's a possibility that we may want to, Mrs. Alvarez may want to sell the property down the road. She still has, has an existing lease. But without the rezoning, that property is drastically affected financially downward if it's not able to be sold as a commercial piece.
Hey. Anyone, any questions for Mr. Andrews while he's on? All right. Let's see. So at this point, we would ask for any public comment and allow it three minutes if anyone wants to speak on this matter.
Hey, Jim, we heard you good, but feel free to unmute yourself again.
I'm sorry, Mike.
So at this point, if we could, council could make decisions, ask additional questions. Anything? Anybody got any? All right, we need to make a motion, and we need Michael to tell us our options we can. We'll need a motion in a second.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I will offer up, I had the opportunity to serve on the planning board when they developed the first zoning maps almost twenty years ago, and it was a crude process. I mean, it was, and there are many property owners like the Alvarez's that were sort of painted over with a broad brush, and we've been sort of addressing these one at a time as their needs come before the town. So I think the, both the planning board and staff recommendation are are consistent, both with, I will see with the comprehensive plan as well as our history of trying to fine-tune our zoning map from those early days. So I'm fully supportive of, of, of this zoning change.
Okay. Would you like to make that a form of a motion, or?
We need to go out of public hearing.
Hang on. Look at my, I'll just, we must close the public hearing first, so somebody make me that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, ready? Second.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on closing? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Now let's move forward with your motion.
All right, well, this will be the first of three motions, as I understand it, but my, my motion is to approve the zoning change request. I don't have the number right here in front of me, but I move that we approve the request for rezoning for R. twenty-three dash zero one.
Okay. Need a second on that motion.
I will second that.
Randy, second that. Any discussion? Favor? Opposed? Then if we need help from Michael or redirect it on where we're going.
If you wish to approve the statements, I would just say to approve the statement of consistency for rezoning twenty-three oh one as presented, unless you wish to make modifications.
I will move that we adopt the statement of consistency for R. dash twenty-three dash zero one.
I can accept it.
I will second that.
All, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? You looking for one more thing to fulfill this round? Okay, somebody making that motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this council adopt the statement of reasonable, excuse me, reasonableness for the rezoning, R. dash twenty-three dash zero one.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Randy. All in favor? Any opposed? Here in none. Everything's good, rezone. We'll move on to B. twenty-six thirty, twenty-six to thirty-five, State Transportation Improvement Plan.
Give me one second, get this. Hopefully opened up, and we'll get going. While this is loading, I'll just give you the, the primer here. The, the State Transportation Improvement Plan is undergoing its next round of updates, which is called Spot seven point oh. And SPOT stands for the State Prioritization Office of Transportation within the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Typically, this is done every couple of years. There was a brief hiatus during the COVID nineteen pandemic, due in large part to the state having absolutely no money whatsoever for transportation projects. It's back on track now, and we're in that process as we speak. There's public input request out now at the state level for anyone in the public to provide comment. And there's two ways that it can be done right now. One of which is a survey online, and the other one will be an in-person session. Okay. So the State Transportation Improvement Plan, or STIP for short, is the plan itself. I mentioned what SPOT is. COVID, again, they're supposed to be happening every two years. There was a delay because of that, and currently, we are working on the twenty-six, twenty-three, five list of projects, and this will take about two years to wrap up this project. And then, so once it's finished, we go right into the next round. So it's a ten-year planning document, and it's examined every two years. This is a little bit difficult to read, so I will just show, I will just read some of the highlights for you. Excuse me one second, like, share the screens so the public can see it. So currently, we are in the review process with local governments and with the public, and there's a public comment period open. At the end of this month, there is an opportunity to go to Silva for any of those that are interested and participate in in-person public meetings. In September, the Board of the Metropolitan Planning Organization will submit a list of projects for the state to consider, and that is done through a process, basically through data analysis to look at the various projects and look at congestion scores, look at accidents, safety, all the kind of metrics that we look for in projects. And then that project is, the data is in, in, input into that system. It goes through the state's process, and then it comes back out next spring for review. And then that takes several months, and then it goes back to the state again for final approval. So it's a, it's a several-year-long process, and we're just getting started. And there's no action required from me this evening. It's as real as just for informational purposes and to get the word, get the word out. This slide should look familiar to you. This is presented by Tristan Winkler from the NPO back in June. And it's just an overview of the process. You have the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is sort of the overarching document that everything else is derived from. Right now, we're in the prioritization process, and projects, once they get through SPOT and make it on the Transportation Improvement Plan, they're considered funded. It doesn't mean they can't change. They often do change in subsequent years. But once they're on that, it actually, you know, eventually goes to design and right-of-way and construction. Again, this is a slide that Tristan presented to you a couple of months ago. There are division needs. I'm going from right to left on this. There's division needs, which are what you consider local needs, regional impact, and then there are statewide mobility projects. And statewide mobility, the best example of that are the interstates, because they obviously are statewide. And the point for them is to move, move people. So each category of these projects gets a certain amount of funding, and there's formulas for each of, each of those different pots. And a regional project, they can do what's called cascading. So if there's a project that is Um, at the division needs, um, but doesn't quite make for the regional impact. If they have any funding left over at their regional impact, they could cascade that funding down to the division needs. So, um, again, there's two options for public input right now. There's an online survey. And then, uh, there's an in-person opportunity in Silva at the district office or division office rather. Between August twenty-first and August twenty-fifth. And I'll provide that information in a moment. The webs, excuse me, the, the survey is online. Um, we will provide the link on the town's website. Uh, folks to, to get to it, but basically, uh, there's a quick slide outlining the process. Then there is information about, um, you have the opportunity to. Um, if you had certain, um, they give you a finite amount of money. And if you were to, to prioritize projects like safety or congestion management or public or pedestrian projects, you can. You can, um, do that on, on the next slide. And then, uh, really where the river meets the road, so to speak, is there's a project map on there. And everything that is on the map that you see on the slide are current projects. I mean, they're already programmed. They're already, they're already in the, in the bucket to be, be completed. Um, so these are shown for reference. Um, and what they're asking the public to do is look at this map. And decide where you think projects should be, um, selected. So if you have a. A bridge, for example, you think needs to be replaced or is a new road that needs to be completed or paved, for example. Um, if you have any ideas for bike or pedestrian projects. Uh, and this covers everything the state does, aviation, highway, transit, ferry, rail and, uh, bike and pedestrian. So what you do is go onto this map and then you, you click and drag one of these icons. So if you have a highway project, for example. You click on that highway, drag it down to the map and flop it on the map. Um, so for example, this is a new signal at, at North Rugby Road and Whisperwood Drive. And so you would type that in, make a note, hit submit. And then it goes to the state database. And then ultimately those are, those are compiled, uh, and presented back to, um, the public once, once all this work is completed. And you can submit as many as you want and any, anywhere that you want. They don't have to be local. If there's anywhere in the state that you know of, of an issue. Um, and, um, you don't have to comment on projects that are already on the map. Those are already in the system. And then lastly, if you are interested in, in going in person. The division offices in Silva and, um, I don't know the times of day. But Steve Williams is the main point of contact there and that's his contact information if you have questions. So again, no action required from this board. I just wanted to, to make you aware that we had a meeting this morning with the. Uh, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, TCC, which is the. Group made up of staff members from local governments next week. There's the T, TAC board. Which is made up of elected officials from the various jurisdictions. Um, and they'll be reviewing a list of ten hundred projects that, uh, were reviewed this morning. Any questions on any of that? While we're on the, the topic of, of transportation, I wanted to give you a quick update on the Mills River Valley Trail as well. We just had a meeting this week with the entire design, the entire team at state level. Um, as well as staff and the mayor participated in this as well. Um, to, to talk about the status of Mills River Valley Trail. And for those of you who may not remember this. Back in, I think it was two thousand fourteen, if I'm not mistaken, there was a, there was a. Yeah, it was a while ago. There was a plan that was developed to connect. The Brevard Bike System all the way up to Buncombe County. And when it was ultimately adopted. In Mills River, it went from South Mills River Road up to the French Broad River. So that's, this is in the state system right now as a project. It's called EB fifty-nine forty-six, if you really want to see the details of it. Uh, but it goes again from the end of the Highway one ninety-one improvement project out by the gas station. Uh, it would connect there and then go all the way up to the French Broad River along Boylston Highway. So it's currently one project. Uh, there is a potential to split, which I'm, I'm thinking that will be our best course of action, uh, and I'll explain that in a moment. Initially, the town had, uh, received three hundred thousand dollars from the, the MPO. For the design phase of this project. And, and you've heard us talk about this in the past. Once that design money is spent or obligated. We have ten years to substantially complete the project. Um, however, there's a big wrench in the gears in this now that. The state has taken a closer look and they did what's called an express design. Where they look at the project. It's not construction level information. But they actually put the project on paper. And they revised their estimate to one point three million dollars instead of three hundred thousand dollars for the design. So our twenty percent match of, of three hundred thousand was sixty thousand. Which, uh, conservative Carolina has raised. The, the revised design cost estimate for the whole project. Is, uh, one point three million, which means our match would be two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now it's important to note that there's a twenty percent match for design, twenty percent match for right of way acquisition. A twenty percent match for utilities and then of course the construction itself. And those funds are due prior to each phase of the project. So if we were to go forward with the design. We would, we would need to provide the state that two hundred and forty thousand dollars before they would begin the work. Uh, we don't know, we don't know how long that will take. A year, eighteen months, I'm assuming would be a conservative estimate. But we won't know that until the, the selected consultant is given the authority, given the, uh, notice to move forward. So the, the phasing that, that I mentioned. Again, which I think is going to be our best step, our, our best option if we want to move forward with this project. Um, phase one would be South Mills River Road, so the original Southern Terminus. Up to Highway one ninety-one, uh, which is just under a mile. And would connect the, the, the forthcoming bike project on one ninety-one up to. One ninety-one on the north end. Um, and the construction cost for that, six point eight million dollars. Um, phase two, if we decide to phase it out would be, uh, from one ninety-one up to the French Broad River. And that's five point nine million. Uh, and these are, these are estimates and I'm sort of generalizing here because each phase has two options. I've just given you the more expensive options on each one. Just to give you a sense of scale. So the total construction for the entire trail would be, uh, twelve point seven million dollars. Uh, that's just the construction. Um, so for those same phases. For phase one, the utilities would be just under four hundred thousand and the right of way would be about a hundred and two thousand. For phase two, we'd be looking at a hundred and two thousand and two hundred and seven thousand. For roughly one point five million dollars in utilities and right of way. So for the entire project, if you were to go from South Mills to the French Broad River, you're looking at just over fourteen million dollars. And in the words of the DOT representative, that could go down. And I, I laughed. I don't think that it will go down. Um, so I think that's our starting point. So we don't need to make a decision this evening, um, but the, the point is. If we want this project to continue and to happen at some point in the future, we'll need to decide. First of all, if we're going to do it. Secondly, if we're going to do it, we want to break it up into phases, which I think makes the most sense. Um, and then if we do want to break it up in the phases. Um, when that would actually happen and it would take a little bit of time. Because the MPO currently doesn't have the funding for the design work on, for their, their part of it. Um, so again, no action is needed tonight. Shannon or Mike, did I miss anything that is worth mentioning in that call?
Um, I did mention that. You know, this is more like a twenty million dollar project by the time it's completed, knowing, uh, start, that the possible start dates and all the way things are going up. Um. You know, if anybody's out there, we'd really like to hear from the citizens of Mills River as to if they really want this or not, you know, um, and. Is this going to affect the citizens along this corridor? Once we started it, I could see it possibly going all the way to Transylvania County like it was proposed. You know, I got mixed feelings about it myself.
Mm-hmm.
If we're just giving our opinions right now.
Yep.
So this is why I've always, whenever time this things come up. If we, if we fund any of that design phase, we're locked in to spending twenty percent on whatever this thing costs. So we need to be careful here. Uh. If you're looking for an opinion from me, it's a big no. As you're looking at spending four million dollars out of town's coffers by the time this thing's finished. Or a trail outside of two eighty from South Mills River to the county line.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's not good thing for your buck. Just my opinion.
We didn't get into that level of detail.
Yeah, we just haven't gotten into that yet. We. Most likely, most likely so. Is anybody in our audience happen to know if, uh, how that works? Sir?
Forgot he was even here. What am I doing talking?
Yeah. That's a good question. Um, I've seen it both ways. I've seen it where. Greenways are maintained by the municipality. Asheville maintains greenways. I would think that in this case, we would probably have to maintain what level of maintenance that would be. Um, since there's no vehicle traffic on it. You know, there may not be a whole lot of maintenance, just keeping it. Mowed and picked up and all that, but there's a lot of other stuff. Comes with that, um, potential liabilities for, you know, things happening on the trail. Um, making sure it's visible from the road to keep down. And that's that means you gotta keep it clean. You gotta maintain it that way. But, um. And the more I think about, I believe the town would be responsible for that, just like with sidewalks. State does not maintain sidewalks. They'll help put them in. Then they, the maintenance transfers to town. Sir, thank you.
Knowing the past, uh, citizens up my way, where it's fifty mile an hour. I think the trail at the time proposed was forty-five feet from major roadway.
Mm-hmm.
So a lot of questions up there was, you know, start with biggest concern is. As you're coming in your driveway. You'll theoretically have to stop, check the trail, make sure nobody's coming through. They've got right of way.
Hmm.
Then cross and get into the void. Then get out in the road, stop and get out the road.
Yeah.
The other issue was who was gonna maintain? The separation now that's become between the trail and the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
You know, where these people are mowing from down to the edge of road where possible.
Right.
You know, who, would that still be? Since the, the right of ways get purchased.
Right.
They didn't feel like they would have to maintain that anymore, which they probably would.
Mm-hmm.
Unless they just wanted for their own look.
Right.
I don't, I really don't think this thing's been thought through fully either because. Who's going to use the trail? Where are you going to park to get onto the trail? Are you, it. Is Wayne gonna let them fill up Valley Ag with park, with cars to, to park there to start on the trail at?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you're going to have costs of four lane, five lane highway. To get on the trail if you come across South Mills River Road.
Mm-hmm.
So. I just, uh, uh, I'm just. There's.
There's a, in the original design, there was a major intersection changes like. Dr. Norton would actually get into the middle. And there would be safety barriers for you and your bicycles and all to get between.
Mm-hmm.
You would be standing in there at times because the timing, you couldn't get across all that between. Maybe, maybe a lot changed. So you'd have the safety pod in the middle. There's all kinds of stuff, uh. That's got to be thought through.
My question, if they're looking at setting it. You said forty-five feet by. Are they buying the whole property from the center of the road all the way back to the path?
Not sure.
Are they splitting it up?
I'm not sure. I don't know that they could do it much different other than buy it all the way over to where they need it, I would imagine. I don't think they're just going to buy the strip through and put the trail.
Oh, yeah, it would be a continuous purchase all the way up to the trail.
Uh. Hypothetically, this goes through. Is the twenty percent match negotiable?
No, no, no. Negotiable. It kind of sounded like the engineering might be slightly negotiable. Like they might be subbing that out. They said that one point three, they might be able to negotiate that down, so.
That's to suck you into paying twenty percent of the twenty million school costs, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it would, it would be, it would be contracted out, um. And, and their, their, that one point three million is, is an estimate based off the state's. Estimate for right of way and construction costs. So they just take that times ten percent. So they get that number. But, but, yeah, that's, it's that part of it's somewhat negotiable. This is just the, in a, the, one of the design options that they. That they presented to us sometime in the last year when they. Got it, got it completed. This is called the express design. So this is. Valley Ag is right here at the bottom of the screen and then this is the Mills River. So there would be, there would be a continuation of the Highway one ninety-one improvement, which currently is. Scheduled to end right there before you get to Valley Ag. So it would cross that driveway and then go across the highway. And then actually be a separate pedestrian bridge. So that would provide significantly safer crossing over the river than. Than crossing on the existing bridge. Um, and I, and I mentioned there's a couple of different options. So one option of this phase. Um, all the way up here at one ninety-one. Is actually a tunnel under the road. Um. See if I can show this better. So one option is, is to put, whoops, sorry. This is one ninety-one going north right on the left, top left of the screen. So this is, it's a tunnel, basically a culvert with a bike path through it. Um, which believe it or not is cheaper than going up the road and building a crossing. Um. Like this, where you go all the way up the highway and then build those medians the mayor was talking about. And then come back down and go across. So. There are a few options. I just gave you the, the most expensive, most conservative numbers to look at, but if we looked at the design more closely, we could. Potentially change the scope so that if we were to do it in phases, for example, maybe this tunnel would not be included in the first phase, which would save. Roughly three quarters of a million dollars.
The big thing is two rivers to cross, one being smaller than the other one.
Mm-hmm.
Even the French Broad Bridge would have a separate lane, best I remember, to cross. On the outside.
You did multiple phases. Did you, did that, would they have to? Connect or could you like? Choose all the cheap spots first?
It would, wouldn't really make sense to do that. I don't think they would, they would want to keep it.
Yes.
Coming one direction or the other.
So you're immediately at like the most expensive start.
Well, I mean, it depends how you look at it. The bridges are, are expensive. The tunnel's expensive, but. You think about taking the sisters, possibly two miles worth of it.
This phase, the first phase, about a mile.
About a mile. So we're looking going all the way to. Walmart in Brevard and tying it in there. At some point in time. We wouldn't, we'd just get to the county line, but.
It can.
Five miles of it.
Yeah, can you imagine the expense it would take to go from? One ninety-one to eighty to the county line? I mean, that would make this look like pennies.
With the bridges being separate bridges from what's already there. Is the DOT going to pay for that or is that going to fall back on that?
Twenty percent, twenty percent of all the total.
Yeah, any, any, any cost.
Any cost at all.
Percent comes back to the town.
In there and right away utility or construction. And once it's constructed, we're almost a hundred percent sure it would, uh, upkeep and would be on us.
So that just, just so we're on the same page, the, the. Sections in front of you, the two phases I've been describing are on, are on the books, so to speak. They've. They've been programmed in the, in the, in the budget for the state. Not for a few years, but they're in there. Um, the section going one ninety-one south, Transylvania County is not included in there in any way, shape or form. So that. It's, it's a possibility, but it's not on the plans right now. And there was, there was an option at one point for. The first phase of this from South Mills to North Mills to be completed. Um, in conjunction with the Highway two eighty project, which would be to close that center turn lane. Um, and at that, if that were the case, then it would be covered a hundred percent by the state because it's a bike pad project associated with a highway project. But that highway project has been pushed out a couple of decades. So that's. Either we wait. Either we wait till that to this point, to that point to do this project, or we do it independently. That's not to say we couldn't get other grants. Um, and in fact, the power bill money we received could be used for this project. Um, for, for the matches that we need to provide.
And just to clarify, looking at the cost estimates we received this week, there, there is no French Broad River Bridge would terminate on our side of the French Broad. That's why the longer portion of the path is actually the cheapest.
I'll make a comment and then it echoes some of Randy's sentiment that. Uh. The Acusta Trail, I guess, is about to become fruition. And what, it's eighteen miles for forty million dollars. Maybe it's top end has like six bridges and. I'm a little troubled by a couple of miles costing twenty million. And where, where does it get you? The same place the road went, you know, so. Uh, and also the other thing that gives me heartburn is that I suspect it's the same people that told us the design is going to be three hundred thousand. Inconveniently now it's gonna be one point three, are the same people that said it's gonna cost fourteen million dollars. They're off by a factor of four, so. Maybe we're talking sixty million for two miles of, so I just, yeah. I think we can ride the shoulder for a while.
What we really need to do though, we really need to find out. If there's any wants, desires or needs for this. And if not, we need to. Get it removed from the bike and pad tip, right?
Mm-hmm.
So they can move on with other projects in the state. Um. It's not to say this couldn't be put back on at a later date. But. I guess that's kind of really what you're asking for.
Essentially.
They'd love to see us move forward with it, but uh. If we're not, they'd like to free up what funds they got to move forward with some other problem. I would just. Ask around, see if anybody's interested. I know. Pretty much everybody I talked to on my way, nobody's really. Interested in it coming up through there. Uh. This has become a little bit different since two thousand fourteen down on this end a little bit, but uh, we just need to ask around and make sure we. Slide to the side. There's no need, cause I don't know how we'd pay for it.
I'm not sure why we ended up here, not a bike lane instead. It seems more appropriate for that reach.
The biggest thing they've got going on with this Jeff is uh. The speed along two eighty. That's the reason, i- if it's. If I remember correctly, and I'm going back from, back probably two thousand fourteen when this was presented the first time. If it was forty-five miles an hour, like coming through by Ingles and all now where it's forty-five, they can be clo- they can build it closer to the road. Is it, when it gets back at the fifty-five, they had to move back out to forty-five feet from edge of road. I guess they figure that's the. You got time to do something, is my guess. That was how it was proposed. It was a very unsafe situation to put a bike lane on a major road like that. Just adjacent to it. So that's why they just wouldn't even, wouldn't even want to think about it.
That helps. Thank you.
Yep.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Daniel, what are, like in your opinion, what are the chances that? We could get a federal grant for something like this, like what Acusta got?
I don't think we have a shot at either of those two grant sources. The, the one that they got was a federal lands access grant. Uh, because they're connecting Pisgah National Forest with, with, with basically Brevard and Hendersonville. And we're not, we're not doing that with, with this connection. The other one that they got was the Raze Grant, which is um. It's an acronym that I cannot recall at the moment. But um, those are, those have a theme every year, like what, sometimes it's connecting. Um. Rural communities with, with urban centers. Sometimes it's economic development. There's always some theme for it. But Brevard got that one this year after applying five years in a row. Um, and each time they resubmitted the grant, they expanded the scope of it to show the federal government that it's having a, a significant. Economic impact on the community. So I, I would, I would not expect to receive either one of those grants. I don't know what other grants at the federal level exist. I'm sure there are others. Um, there's other things at the state level that. Are options, you know, the Dogwood Foundation, for example, is, is, is local and they're looking to put money back into the community for, for health. Healthy living and, you know, healthy like, healthy lifestyles. But I don't know to what level they'd be, they would be interested in doing something like that.
But healthy lifestyles along two eighty, maybe look at sixty feet off of edge of foot.
Yes, cause nobody knows.
I mean, they was, they was piled up at schoolhouse truck when I come down a long ago. Um. So. Nothing more on this. We'll move on with our staff reports and.
Sounds good.
I would just ask for everybody to reach out to you.
So is there a date that you need to let? Them know by them being the state?
Uh, the M P O?
Yes.
Uh, we'll probably meet next Thursday, but uh.
Yeah, this isn't actually on the agenda for next Thursday. Um, but they. Basically, we left the meeting yesterday with the agreement to reconvene in about a month or so, I believe, with that work group.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that'll hurt when we get ready.
Um, just a quick update. The audit is. Um, the in-house work is finished. Um, nothing was, nothing of any concern was brought to our attention. Uh, it should be on your November agenda for formal presentation. Um, other than that, just a lot of fiscal year-end reporting.
Probably, actually.
Um, so you'll see, I have no tax report for July, cause as of July thirty-first, we had not gotten um, our data file from the county yet. Uh, we did, I did receive it on Tuesday. Um, we sent the data, I sent the data to the printer today. I'm hoping to approve a proof tomorrow. And with luck, the bills will be mailed next week. In the meantime, the tax amounts are on our website and can be paid online with a credit card.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, parks and rest.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, first, I wanted to thank a few people. We held our first uh, uh. Series picnic with professionals this summer. So I want to give a special thanks to the Henderson County Sheriff's Department. Uh, Jim for coming out, um, Mills River Fire Rescue, North River Farms and Ascendium Construction. Um, for those of you not familiar with this, this new program, um, basically it's, it's like a lunch and learn, but for kids and um. So these businesses and professionals gave up their lunch hour to come out to the park, brought their equipment, answered tons of questions. Um, and everybody had a really good time. So I just, uh, really again, want to thank those folks with the Henderson County Sheriff's Department. Mills River Fire Rescue, North River Farms and Ascendium Construction. Now, we had a really good time there. Um, and then also, uh, for anyone who attended, we had a party in the park here last weekend. Um, we had over a thousand attendees for that. Um, and with the help from the Blue Ridge Bicycle Club, that uh, the town with the grant from N C D O T and what the town provides, we gave out two hundred and twenty-five bike helmets for kids in need. So. That was really awesome and we thank the Blue Ridge Bicycle Club for helping us get those kids fitted. Um, other than that, we just have, uh, a few saved the dates. So August twenty-sixth, we have Top Gun Maverick playing in the park. Um, September thirtieth, we have Guardians of the Galaxy and along with that, we'll do a family camping night. So. The movie's free for anybody, but if people want to camp out in the park afterwards, there's a fee you can register on our website. Um, and then October the fourteenth, it's the original Ghostbusters. So save those dates. Um, and then lastly. Um, haven't seen you guys in a couple of months. We do have two new employees in the department. So, um, our recreation programmer, uh, Michelle Simpson. Started about two months ago and just yesterday, Josh Forrest is our new maintenance technician. So if you see him around, just give him a warm welcome and they're fitting in just.
All right, Michael, fine, good. Yeah, quick update. Uh, there's a slight slowdown right now in residential permits. We're about eighty percent of last year's numbers for this time of year. Um, mainly I attribute that to there not being a new major subdivision being constructed at this time and just the general economic, uh, real estate climate. Um, commercial industrial interest is, is still strong. And speaking of that, if you're driving towards the county line, you'll see Mills River Self-Storage. South location off of Huey Drive near Turkey Penn Road, um, has cleared their site. So you'll be seeing construction activity there. Uh, soon over the next couple of months. Um, we spent July doing a lot of work on uh, building up the watershed program, getting application materials. Uh, building out Smart Go to handle that. And we also have a new page of the planning and zoning website, basically explaining watershed regulations. Uh, so for anyone interested, feel free to check that out. Um, we are expecting to receive the legacy revised plans in the coming weeks. Um, I just received their uh, T I A today. Um, so staff's gonna spend some time probably uh, in a week or two digging into those documents. And then lastly, uh, the planning board revisited the conditional zoning text amendment on August first. Uh, they did recommend for a two acre minimum parcel size, and so that's going to be coming back to this council September fourteenth for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Munch.
Well, we have an exciting announcement to make. You all know this, but for the benefit of those in the room, the town now owns property next door. It purchased two parcels last week, last week, um, and closed on that. So congratulations to the town and the citizens. You now own seventy-four acres. And just to remind you about closed session.
All right, uh, any council comments? There's none? Okay. Well, you're ready.
Hi. There was a big crowd there. They had almost six hundred people.
Wow, oh. Good deal. Okay, so uh. For y'all, for y'all in the room, we're going into closed session here before we adjourn our meeting to uh, talk about a potential. Uh, legal litigation and we're glad y'all come out. We'll see you next.